Okay. I'm running. You can start whenever you want.
Uh, first on my agenda is public hearing two thousand twenty-two special assessments.
A public hearing is being called for the special assessments for two thousand twenty-two. These are unpaid charges, meaning unpaid water, water and sewer bills, mowing, uh, non-mowing, anything like that that's on the books. Tonight we have two properties. Um, these properties were sent certified mail. Um, and were notified of the public hearing to be present tonight to contest their assessments. And at this time in the audience, we do not have those two property owners.
Uh, can I leave that open for a little bit and then move on to the workshop early?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I'm gonna do. I'll open the workshop then.
So on the workshop agenda, we have the fee schedule for park and campground services. And did the council have a chance to take a look at the proposed fees that are being proposed?
It's still gonna be lower than the name.
Yeah, we actually did some research and pulled surrounding campgrounds and we are comparable in price. On the, the pool hookup and the seasonal. Do they have any questions or concerns?
What's the difference between electric slash sewer and full connections?
Uh, full connections is, uh, water.
Oh, is that one? Okay.
Seasonal, all utilities are included for that price?
Seasonal is, is all, yeah, is the full hookups.
So then is there a park Wi-Fi included for that too, or what?
In this year it is. Uh, and Juan, you can help me out on that too. At one point I knew we discussed that it was, couldn't be like a hotel room where you could upgrade your internet or something. This year, we are going through the year and not charging anything extra for Wi-Fi that's included in the price. And we will reevaluate the situation at the end of next year.
And how many, are all the new spots gonna be reserved for seasonal or you're just gonna fill them?
We're going to fill them as well as possible.
But they'll be for regular, non-seasonal around two?
Yes.
Those aren't, those seasonals aren't set up for electric to be separate?
Not at this point. There isn't separate meters on any of those. And again, we can reevaluate on all of that. Cause right now, the handful of seasonals that we do have, I don't think makes a, a big enough impact for us to actually put in all new separate meters for each one of them and stuff like that.
Are we ever gonna consider park models or actual seasonals with attached decks? Or are you gonna just kinda leave it at?
How do you guys feel about that in regards to being in, in the flood zone?
Well, it'd be their liability.
It'd be their insurance.
There's other campgrounds that have the same issue that are seasonal.
Yeah, like Springfield, uh, well, I believe Springfield actually lets them put, uh, decks on, don't they?
Just put a few of the two.
Can I check into the Springfield and the ones that are at high risk of flooding before we make a decision on that?
Springfield goes underwater every time we go underwater, so whatever they're doing, they must sign a waiver or something.
I know there's one down by Rochester that, that, that happens too. And then, you know, when they know it's gonna flood, they just have to move their campers, but they are seasonal.
And then the park just says, yeah. Yeah. But does anybody else have any questions on rates or concerns? Were not high enough, too high? If not, let's, uh, move on to the next one then.
The pool, the pool rates were evaluated by Katie, um, the manager. We hire Lake Crystal Rec Center to manage our pool. So Katie and the previous, the previous, uh, what do you wanna, Katie? Our.
Previous manager?
I'm sorry. The current? The, the current manager, there's two of them. So Katie's at the rec center and then we have another individual that's actually located at the pool. So those two got together and they reevaluated all of the prices. And this is what they are proposing for an increase on the pool. So a season pass is going from a hundred and thirty dollars to a hundred and fifty. Individual season pass seventy, with seventy is going to eighty. Swimming lessons will go from forty to forty-five. Um, does anybody see any problems with those rate increases?
And they, 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 like Crystal drove those rate increases?
We hire Lake Crystal, um, in regards to managing our pool. I asked for their advice in regards to doing the fee structure. This is what they're proposing.
Okay. Yeah, I just wondered where the science comes from and that's it. They run the other place, so they would know.
Yeah. And so they felt that these, and to be honest with you, I don't know when we increased last time. It's been quite a few years. So.
And the special event pass is still only seven dollars? And that's for like park days or the midnight swims, correct?
Midnight swims. Yep.
Okay. Any more concerned questions? If not, let's move on to the next one.
Okay. Um, I handed out one more fee structure and that is from the fire department. So the fire department went over theirs and, um, I also pulled the ordinance in regards to them actually establishing fees. They have the ability to establish fees. And so this is what they came up with. I do have Travis in the room and I do have Mark Slater in the room. And the fire department has discussed this and has all agreed upon this fee structure.
And these fee structures have no bearing on what our agreement is with the, uh, other townships that we serve, correct?
No, but in the ordinance, it states that if we, um, provide fire service to these, that we can charge these rates, but that doesn't pertain to their charges through the township or the.
It's the individual that's calling for a service.
Individual property owner that the call goes to.
So when was the last time the fire department adjusted their fees?
The last time the fire department, this was two thousand fourteen. This is when I first came here and I remember that. And I would say that is the last time that we did anything was two thousand fourteen.
And what's the biggest change with this is just the hourly after, the hourly, or the hourly rate after.
Not.
Cause we didn't have that before.
Not only that, but you are also extending the way you charge too, because before you weren't really charging for certain, um, things that you were doing.
Yeah.
And so you're expanding your fee structure, um, and making it more feasible for what you are actually doing.
How much is the increase? I guess I'm missing that. What was it?
Do you guys wanna explain how you build?
So this basically, the way it's set up typically is like five hundred dollars in town, a thousand dollars for any rural calls. Things obviously change, you know, depending on the call. You gotta use spill kits and other different things. They can vary. But there hasn't really been much of a structure on what you charge. That's just kinda been the baseline. This kinda gives us, this is where we're at and eventually down the road if we need to adjust anything, you know, we get some certain calls every year seen more often, we can add stuff to it. But this gives us a base that if you're going to, you know, an accident where you have to do extrication or you have to do some, some other stuff, this just helps us, okay, this is what the call was, this is how much we're charged for it.
We had a couple of calls where we assisted other, like a green bin. We were there for, how many hours was it?
Well, we were there for a while.
At least eight, six hours. So, you know, normally it would be just the flat rate, but now we can charge the extra time of being there on top of our base rate.
And do you have any idea where this sits with other departments our size?
The, the, the initial rate itself really hasn't.
The issue is when you have a call, like we had a call with, uh, at Edgar's, and we were there, how long were we up there?
Well, you had, you had five hours.
Five hours. And you're charging five hundred dollars for that? And each guy's, no, but we are. And then each guy gets fifteen dollars an hour. So if you have thirty guys there for five hours and you only got five hundred bucks, it wasn't too good of a day.
No, I get that. I just, I don't even compare this to you. So I don't know.
I would assume everything's different.
Why?
Well, it's per department. It's whatever they wanna do. Like St. James doesn't pay like we do. St. James gets what, a dollar?
No, it's a base rate of fifteen dollars.
He gets fifteen dollars a call.
Yeah, where we get per hour. So their fee schedule might be different.
I don't think we're out of the, the realm of the price because, I mean, it's, it's kinda established the, the same price as what we've been charging years back. It's just now we have a set definition. Okay, these are the prices for these calls. These are the prices for these calls. So it's not really changing, increasing. The only thing we're increasing now is that price after the, the additional, you know, whatever call hours it was. It's just now we're defining a set pay scale of this is what we're charging for these calls.
So it's safe to say with the exception of Fred, instance like a car accident that has an extraction, extrication, it would've been the same as a regular car accident now because there's an extrication, it's a little more.
Yes.
And then the other change is that if you're there for more than two hours, and that, and that makes sense. That I totally get because if it's five hundred dollars for two hours, then every extra additional hour, a hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing that happened, a lot of these charges, uh, they're all billed to the insurance company. And then the insurance company pays about ninety percent of those charges.
No, it makes sense to me. Appreciate the explanation.
Which one's next?
So the next one is the change order request for the government center for soil corrections in the amount of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and five dollars. This is a proposed change order. I had brought it to the table a while ago. When, when the project was bid, the, the site evaluation wasn't, there was no soil, soil borons taken at when they turned in the RFP, the bid amount. This came through the project, um, and needed some corrections done to the soil due to, uh, some things that were found. And so they are asking if we'd be willing to pay this or part of it or something for this, because this is an unforeseen expense.
You know what the cost of the soil corrections under the fire hall foundation were?
No, I wish I would've, I could've got that information for you today. Um, you know, I don't know what the actual money. If you wanna break down, I can give you a breakdown after I talk to Lee about it.
You know, I, I think it's kind of an oversight on their part that I can see the benefit in the longevity of the parking lot. I personally would be a lot more comfortable paying half of the correction. Because it wasn't oversight on their part. I mean, they should've, they should've known as soon as they dug into the area where the footings go that it was gonna have to be a full correction. Or at least had a pretty good inkling that it was gonna need full correction over the entire site. And if it had been brought up at that time, there could've been some other budget concessions made maybe to afford it. Now we're at the end and it's basically a full, you know, add-on.
Yeah.
So I guess that would be my proposal. It's proposed we pay half.
Bring around that to the even number and make it twenty?
Sure.
Cause I'm comfortable with that too, because, you know, theoretically, you should've done samples on the whole construction site.
And it has a benefit to us. I mean, I guess we had the option of not, not doing the correction. But I don't think that would've made sense at the time either. I mean, everybody was in favor of doing the correction at the time. Not knowing exactly what it was gonna cost to correct everything. But I'd be a lot more comfortable paying half than I would for the entire thing as long as, I mean, there should be some fault in, in not doing the prep work or the recon of the soil corrections at the time.
Did they do the fire hall part before the bid or as part of the RFP?
Yeah.
Or did they find out after, after the fact too?
No, they paid for that after the fact, the, the soil corrections on the foundation of the fire hall. But they knew then that they'll probably have to do soil corrections on the entire site.
Oh, they did?
Well, they should've. I mean, they saw that they had to do some fill corrections there. So I would assume you'd think that, oh, this soil isn't gonna be good enough for foundation footings. It's probably not gonna be good enough for the parking lot either. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm in it.
And then if they would've brought that up and said, hey, we're probably gonna have to do sound corrections over the rest of this parking lot, then we could've made some concessions on, you know, maybe something else we could've admitted to, at its front end. We could've probably admitted something to cut the cost from, I'll absorb this fifty or forty thousand. That's just my thought. At least what I would propose or come back with to start as a negotiation point myself.
Do we know what their view is?
I haven't talked.
They would like us to pay all of it. I think it, I think coming back to this table with at least half is better than nothing.
Well, it's better than nothing, but I guess.
I mean, I don't want it to be a sticking point either, but.
Yeah, I guess I don't either. And, and so there are two things, and I think you're right. I think that's the way to go, but I think there are two things that at least bear a little bit of discussion. The first is, if you advertise that over the part of the lot, the life of the parking lot, that we're not gonna have to replace, what does that really come out to? The other part of it is, for twenty-something years, I've listened about this new fire hall and in six frickin' days, we're moving in. That's awesome for what? One-fourth the cost we originally thought we were gonna have. And I guess there's a part of me that, that maybe I'm a little too excited about what we're getting and what we're moving into, but I think that there's something to that. And in the grand scheme, is this really that big an amount of money given, one, what we ended up with and what we ended up not having to pay for it?
Oh, no.
Two, what it's like for the parking lot and the life of the, of the building and the parking lot. So I, that's why.
To, to me, it kinda feels like, wow, you know, you buy, you buy a used car and you think you're getting a great deal and they charge you you know, ninety dollars for floor mats if you're replacing it. But maybe you paid forty-five dollars for the floor mats and it would be happy.
Cody, you're concerned?
I guess I'd start there. I mean, I.
Start there and see what?
That's, that's what I would do anyway.
I think, I think that's a great way to go. We start there and if we have to have a further discussion.
Yeah, I mean, if it's gonna be a contentious point, I don't wanna, you know, ruin a working relationship that's been going splendidly five days before we move in either, so.
Well, they wouldn't have warranted the asphalt without this being done, right?
I don't even know if they would've.
I don't know if they would've put the asphalt down.
I don't, I don't know if they would've put the asphalt on the existing soils. We would've been stuck with maybe, you know, new asphalt in the driveways and the old parking lot. I don't know what they would've done. But that's really not our problem in this room. To get there, you know, that's, like, I'm sure Nick will run into things in this building where he opens up a wall and says, oh, you know, that's gonna cost me some money. You know?
Yeah, I would like it to.
I don't know if he's gonna pass that along to his, you know, tenants right away either, but he might have to at the end. But I do see the benefit in having the soil corrections done and the longevity is a lot to the parking lot.
Any other thoughts, man?
No, not at all. What, on the side of the fire hall, we playing grass there?
On the side of.
On the street side?
Main street side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just can't do it now because it's.
We just put rock or something in there?
There's rock in the boulevard, but then there's grass closer to the building.
I mean, do we wanna just rock, put rock in there instead of grass?
They make really good.
I mean, to me, that'd just be like concrete the whole sucker all the way. Can we give them the full price? Can we give them the full forty grand and just concrete that whole site? Would they do that? It's, for what?
Guys.
So you give them two strips?
You just get them, get only.
Get them, it ain't gonna look any better. It's, it's concrete.
Maybe we should make it a butterfly garden.
You have somewhere for the fire dog to go to the bathroom.
I just have an issue with having that much.
Fire dogs.
Next to a side lot with a bunch of kids. That's nice.
Staying with the issue at hand, I, I would suggest that we start with half and see what.
I need it as an added agenda item if you have, um, counsel that.
Number five, add the agenda. Okay, so is that the last?
Other than to discuss where we sit with the budget now that, um, tax statements or the proposed tax statements are all there. If there was any questions, comments, or concerns today in regards to how I should move forward before the truth in taxation with any of the budget numbers that we did talk about.
Well, my property value went up to thirty-five thousand dollars and my proposed tax bill went down about a hundred and fifty dollars the way I saw it. So I don't know. I, to me, it looked good, but maybe I wasn't looking at the right numbers.
The tax rate, the tax rate went down.
Yeah.
So the tax rate, um, went down to sixty, sixty dollars and I, I don't have the exact numbers, but it went down to sixty dollars per one thousand. So that your tax rate went down, but your value went up. So I just want to know if there's anything that you want me to do differently than what I've already proposed to you for the budget. And the budget has the fifth officer in it and it also has another, um, staff, um, city, um, staff on the side.
Speaking of that, where do we sit on the fifth officer?
We're doing a background right now. Needs to be completed. Short answer for me is no, we don't need to do anything different.
You wanted to move forward with the proposed, um, percentage that we had proposed in September?
I don't care for that.
Was there any capital outlay?
Yeah.
Projects that are, you know, not gonna necessarily happen or anything that has to be moved around? For a fire truck that's doubled in price or?
And that was, I kept the same structure in this budget as I have projected for the last how many years? And so our annual meeting is in February for the ambulance and the fire truck, which then our, our amounts will change due to inflation or whatever the fire department decides or whatever the hospital decides in regards to the equipment. So right now, to make sure that we have something in there, I have what has been projected already. No inflation number on that until our annual meeting in, in February. Is that?
But that would be for next year's.
That'll be then for twenty twenty-four. But at least we established that there will be something put away.
Any other concerns on truth and taxation?
Cause that will be our next meeting. And for everybody in the room, this is our last meeting in here. Yay.
And you sent all the correct papers and posted everywhere?
I did. I sent it to Michelle to post in the legal notices for the next, um, two weeks in regards to the meeting change. But after the first of the year, then we will do a resolution in regards to the location, um, elections, all that stuff. But for right now, it's a posting in the paper and on our front door.
Chris, did you have running totals for twenty twenty-two's budget and how close in spending you were to the amount of allocated funds?
Where we sit right now.
Right.
We, we sit, we're fine. But that's why I need to stress to the council, um, that the staff has been informed that anything over five hundred dollars, any invoices over five hundred dollars have to come to me so I can approve them. I watch all the lines now for the next, next month closely to make sure. But I can't approve something if I don't know where we sit.
And then LGA totals and everything are pretty much.
The same.
Both same.
I'm, uh, less than, like a less than one percent increase next year. Which I think I have explained to you all on that too. In the last how many years, it has not increased with inflation by no means, so.
No.
Was there supposed additional help in the bonding bill for that or not really?
I never heard anything about the LGA.
Oh.
Put the bonding builder bringing back to the table was the one that included the Medellin project, correct?
Um, yeah. So actually, I am meeting with Adam tomorrow. I think I saw my calendar. I mean, with Adam to discuss, uh, the new numbers that we will then submit for the Center Street project.
Are you gonna have to testify again?
We didn't know.
I just talked to Representative Olson today.
Okay.
I mean, he's gonna be on that for us.
And so I will get the new inflated prices so I can get it back to them so that they can propose it again.
And if it passes in the upcoming session, funding bill, are you looking at twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, I'm looking at twenty twenty-four. And if we are on that, then we're looking at also the joint main project. Is that still on? And I guess it all depends on a county engineer really and where we sit.
And inflation?
And inflation. It might not be within our, our realm of, uh.
Right now, it's on the table.
Yep. But if we would, the twenty twenty-four would be Center Street. So Center Street would go from all the way north, right up by the trailer park and all the way down to, uh, the lift station. And then it also includes the force main that goes underneath the river out to the, the, the wastewater treatment plant.
And that's been in since seventy?
It's time.
Does it include replacing the lift station?
No, the lift station is not. But that, that is a twenty twenty-six when your PFA loan goes off. That, the lift station and the wastewater plant are already starting to be evaluated in regards to when the PFA loan falls off, then you should really get back on and look at your full reconstruct.
Do you, uh, wanna have a water wastewater commission meeting before the end of the year or?
I would like after I find out Adam actually gives me for, after we go through everything tomorrow, I would like to have a water wastewater meeting. Would like to have a golf commission meeting. Would like to have a street commission meeting. Would like to have all of them. So if I start sending out.
Before the end of the year?
Yep. So if I start sending out dates and times, I'd like to get those situated.
You just wanna break in your new meeting room here, really?
I know. You don't know how excited I am. When you have been living with what we've been living with for the last how many years since COVID, I'm just so excited that everything is in its place. So, yes, I'm, we're gonna have meetings all the time. Yes. I bet you guys are excited.
After the committee appointments, we should probably have like.
Another set of meetings.
Right, to get any new members up to speed.
Yep.
Okay. Any, uh, more questions, concerns? If not, I'd entertain a motion to. If not, I'd entertain a motion to.
That's all the workshop, right?
Yep, that's all the workshop.
I'd entertain a motion to, uh, during the workshop.
That is a more.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor? Opposed, same time, motion carried, now I'm gonna open up public hearing again, uh, and I see no more new people in the, uh, room, so as of this time, is that on my agenda items to?
That is the resolution.
That's the resolution, passing those charges forward.
Yep.
Okay, and.
Do you want to motion to close the public hearing?
I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I got a motion and a second.
Andy and Glenn?
Yeah. Any other discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same time, motion carried, we stand adjourned.